Mr. Mayor, I'll let you open this meeting on behalf of the village.
As you just well said, I'd like to open this meeting on behalf of the village.
And on behalf of the town, I'd like to open this town of North Elba. Opening statement from you first.
Please take notice of the village board of the Village of Lake Placid and the town board of the town of North Elba. We'll hold a joint public hearing on a proposed local law to amend the Village of Lake, the Town of North Elba Land Use Code on November 17th, 2025 at 5:00 PM in the North Elba Town Hall, first meeting room 2023 Main Street, Lake Placid, New York. The proposed local law would amend the land use code as follows. One, add temporary workforce housing as a conditional use in planning districts, town residential, village residential, village center, gateway corridor, and old military road and provide a definition and standards for such uses. Two, add special event venue as a conditional use in planning districts, rural, countrywide, village center, gate corridor, and old military road corridor, and provide a definition and standards for such uses. Three, allow up to two accessory dwelling units on a given property, each not to exceed seventy-five percent of the total habitable area of principal dwelling on the property. Four, amend the sign regulations to delete campaign election signs and personal lawn signs from the list of regulated signs, and then the sign regulations for home occupation to include special event venue. Five, provide that accessory dwelling units used as short-term rentals must be hosted. No environmental resources are expected to be affected. The complete text of the proposed local law is available for inspection by any interested person on the Town of North Elba Village of Lake Classic website, northelba.villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard, to join via Zoom, link included, signed Anita Essling and Lori Curtis, Town Board.
Thank you, Anita. In addition, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to listen to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to share their feedback on the specific matter of these proposed changes to the land use code. It is not a time for back and forth discussion with the boards or for debate among members of the public. We are here to hear you, and all comments will be part of the public record. Please direct all comments to the boards. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to do so. We will begin with in-person attendees, followed by those joining virtually. When it is your turn to speak, please begin by stating your full name clearly for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you prefer to submit your thoughts in writing, written comments will be accepted through November 24th, 2025, and may be emailed to hgreen@northelba.org. Thank you for your cooperation and for taking the time to participate. We appreciate your engagement in this process.
Anita and Lori, I don't know if you asked people to sign in. Ask them to sign in if they wanted to speak, because I was, did not. So then I'll just ask people to raise their hand if they would like to speak, and we'll call them people that way. And just say your name clearly, and then I'll have a timer for the three minutes. Anyone like to speak?
Well, I'll start.
Go ahead.
I just wondered how did these topics arise? You know, the land use.
Can you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Laura, you're. And, and you know, like, why these topics? How did they come from center?
Is that your comment?
Yeah.
Next comment. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Um, so say your name, please.
Sorry, Wes Shannon, Lake Placid. So this is just about comments where they're getting answers to questions?
Correct. It's a public comment. Is that your end of your comment?
Oh, yeah.
Jane Armstrong, Lake Placid, opposed to allowing more short-term rentals in any capacity. We have enough housing for tourists, but not enough for permanent residents. In terms of temporary workforce housing, this shouldn't be the burden of our residential neighborhoods to.
Thank you. In person.
Wes LeShannon again, I'm sorry. Um, it seems to me that it doesn't matter what size property you have, that you would be able to put onto accessory units. You can have a third of an acre, or you can have twenty acres, and you're limited to two units. I don't know, that's as far as I could get in there, so I'm not sure if that's completely accurate. And I'm also questioning, what is the definition of a unit? Could it be a camper for the summer, as long as it has utilities, those utilities available? And would campers be allowed in a residential neighborhood if that is the case? I think the wording needs to be a little bit more specific about what an accessory unit would be. And I think you need to adjust what the land area would be, whether it's a quarter or a third of an acre, or, you know, multiple acres. I think that's very broad right there in the range.
Thank you.
Sorry, you go ahead. You go first.
Okay, May Chow, listening. Um, I have a comment in regards to the temporary workforce housing as a conditional use in the um, town residential and village residential area. Um, my comment is is in regards to the housing issue. I feel like being housing that we have in our residential, it shouldn't be the burden, burden of our housing to be used for this workforce housing. I don't think that we should continue using our single-family houses to be used for these J-ones. Um, they're just putting, it, it appears that they're putting multiple number of individuals in these houses that are for single families. So you're putting in multiple beds of people, just random people in these houses, which will have like number of bedrooms and number of bathrooms. It's not sanitary and not safe to have multiple people in bedrooms where there are like four bedrooms and you're putting like five or six people in one bedroom, and they're sharing maybe two or three bathrooms, and you're talking about fifteen, twenty, thirty people in a single-family house. It shouldn't be a burden for these neighborhoods. We should be looking at these neighborhoods to be back to single-family homes. I mean, as a family in a neighborhood, there's no families, there's no kids growing up in our neighborhoods. Our, our schools, the population is declining. We don't, I mean, my daughter, I mean, I'm looking at the, I've, I've like looked at the number of kids graduating from our high school. It's declining. I mean, there's not that many kids going through our school system, and then we're losing programs and I mean, we need to, to look at another way of this, this, what is it called? Temporary workforce housing. If we need to do something for workforce housing, maybe they should like look to build an apartment complex for workforce housing, or put that back onto the employer. But we need to use the single-family housing for single families. That's what we need to look at for these residential areas. And that's, I mean, that's where I, my comment would be for, is for looking at that one part of the, oh, three minutes is up, sorry. Maybe I can get another three minutes.
Sure. Um, Shelley Reynolds, I'm from North Elba. I'm concerned that this particular meeting was not, the content of it was not very well publicized. And as it is, the board's proposal of the five amendments to the land use code, code don't seem as transparent as they could be. That being said, I'd like to appeal to the town and the village board to consider publishing more information about these five amendments in the local newspaper or other media sources, and gathering more public input other than this, and giving time for discussion, Q and A, before voting on the amendments. Uh, amendment number one, in 2023, after collecting a great deal of community input, rooming and boarding houses were removed as conditional use. Temporary workforce housing is basically the same thing, using a different name. It's just another way of removing more family homes from our local housing inventory, so they can be used for commercial gain. Perhaps temporary workforce housing could be allowed in the village center or other areas that already have a lot of commercial businesses, but not in all of the planning districts that are currently under that proposal. The burden of solving the temporary workforce housing needs, um, this, the burden of solving that um, should not be on the responsibility of community members who are not business owners. Amendment number two, special events venue, I'm really confused how that can be proposed without a definition first. The way it's written is first we have to, you're going to approve it, and then you're going to define it. Are we talking about weddings? Are we talking about rock concerts? Are we talking about huge frat parties? A definition and an explanation should be provided prior to that proposal, not afterward. The districts listed, um, as, under that amendment two, how a lot of single-family homes and those, everybody in those homes should be allowed to give input prior to the board's voting on those amendment, on that amendment. Amendments three and five, uh, amendment three, I strongly oppose allowing more than one accessory dwelling up to three-quarters the size of a principal dwelling. That means that somebody with a house that's 4,000 square feet can build two more 3,000 square foot homes for, you know, huge rentals. On the other hand, I strongly support proposed amendment number five, if having a short-term rental accessory dwelling enables a family to afford to stay in their home in Lake Placid, that seems like a perfect use of the 2023 short-term rental codes. And yes, it should meet the requirements that they have posted to us.
Thank you, Sean. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bob Maswick. I can walk to four of these temporary workforce houses in five minutes from my house. Um, and I'm really not sure why we were even talking about this. In April 2019, the State Supreme Court has had already said that these planned uses are not permissible in the zoning district where a property was located. Did that fall within the definition of single-family residence? I would suggest that maybe the town and village boards come at this a little bit differently. Maybe come at it the way some other communities in New York City are doing this. The burden falls on the J-1 sponsor organization. And before those J-1s can come here, they have to have their housing already developed. I know business owners down in some of the tourist communities on Long Island. Right after Christmas every year, they start work on finding housing for their worker before they even go through the visa process to get them over here. That's the way I think that this community should approach this thing. This burden should fall on the employers and that J-1 sponsor organization, not on people in the community.
Karen, Karen North, Strong Lake Placid. Um, I'm concerned about the amendments one and three. Um, the primary issue with housing in Lake Placid, and by extension, employment in Lake Placid, is a lack of affordable housing for permanent residents. I'm not sure why we would take any long-term housing stock from residential neighborhoods, convert it or build it to house tourists or temporary workers. We are at maximum tourist occupancy, while at the same time, we're at minimum occupancy in our classrooms. Why would we go back on a pledge made just two short years ago to curb this trend? In terms of temporary workforce housing, in effect, boarding houses or dormitories, the question then becomes, well, where will the temporary workers live? I would answer indignified housing. Not in single-family homes with bunk beds crammed into every room, with workers sleeping in attics, and eleven people or more per house, houses not intended for this use. I would also say that the problem of temporary worker housing is not a problem that our residential neighborhoods should be forced to solve. This is an issue for employers to solve in a way that does not impact residential housing stock and that provides dignified accommodations for temporary workers. I would further ask how houses for temporary workers are currently operating in our residential neighborhoods. Boarding houses were purposely removed from the most recent code, so this is not a currently allowed use. In terms of land use codes, the standard is similar use, so landlords can't just rename them. If people are currently housing eleven or more non-related individuals in three-month intervals, it doesn't matter what the lease says, these are not single families, and therefore should be considered in violation of our code. I truly appreciate the board's attempt to regulate these and to force landlords to recognize dignified housing for all, but I'm concerned that monitoring of this type of housing will once again fall on the backs of neighbors, which is uncomfortable and honestly exhausting. I appreciate your attention to this and your concern for our temporary workforce, but I think the amendment falls short in terms of enforcement and allowable locations. In terms of accessory dwellings and short-term rentals, uh, what will this town look like with up to two accessory dwellings for property to house tourists that we currently have to recruit temporary workers to serve? We have finally gotten to a place where restrictions on short-term rentals are having an impact. And I want to ask that these boards not turn their backs on the community's extensive feedback leading up to the most recent code. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Karen. And more in person? I'm going to turn my pen. All right, anyone on Zoom?
Um, I would like to say something. Um, Stephanie Murphy, I live in the village of Lake Placid. Um, I really would like to have had the opportunity to ask some questions, but I understand it's really just a public comment. Um, opportunity. Um, my husband and I, we both grew up here, we both graduated from here. Um, we have decided to start our family here. Um, we contribute to the community. Um, and we recently were given the opportunity to have an accessory dwelling unit um, built on our property, not for the intention of short-term rentals, but for the intention of, uh, housing my grandmother on our property. I can see inside the living room, across from my living room, inside the living room of the accessory dwelling unit that is less than 800 square feet large. Um, our goal was to be able to allow our family members to come up and utilize that space when we would like them to. Um, and unfortunately, we were met with restrictions because of the land use code. Um, while we are hardworking and contributing members to society, um, or excuse me, this community, um, the opportunity to short-term rent that, that accessory dwelling unit would allow us the opportunity to remain in this community long-term. So while I understand that there is a, a housing crisis, I do believe that it is short-term rentals should be considered on a case-by-case basis. Um, I, I moved back from college here when there wasn't any restrictions, and I was forced to live with my grandmother at the time. And while I understand that there is a need for, for housing here, I do genuinely believe that it is that, that we should be able to do what we feel is best for our family, um, with the, the, our property and what is on our property at the time. So in regards to number five, um, I am supportive of this. Um, I appreciate the consideration of it. Um, but I, I do genuinely believe that it's a case-by-case basis and not a one-size-fits-all model. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Anyone else on Zoom?
This is Norman Ahmet, um, uh, North Elba, I guess, and I just wanted to say I'm very excited about the proposed changes to the use code about doing events and weddings, um, and contributing to the local economy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Anyone else on Zoom? All right, no one else on Zoom? I'll go back to the room one more time. Johnny?
Hi, Tim Wilson, North Elba. Uh, I'm just really concerned about special event menu, what, what that really means. I haven't heard a, any description of that. It just seems like too much of a catch-all dangerous thing, uh, had in place. It's not defined. It really, my opinion needs to be defined much better.
Anyone else?
Can I make another comment? Even though I made a comment? The whole three minutes. Am I allowed to make another comment since I used three minutes? Or can I not?
Everyone else first.
Okay. I'll wait.
Yes.
Jennifer, Village of Lake Placid. Again, the concern of the neighborhoods losing that neighborhood feel to have soul people who are temporary in and out and in and out without having any kind of community sense really takes away from the sense of community. Even if we wanted to get to know these, not even. They want to get to know these people, and in three months, they're gone. You still don't have a community. And I am very concerned that we are preventing nurses, teachers, other people who want to live, live here and be part of the community and serve in the way that you folks serve. We are preventing them from, from doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, who's looking? All right, Mayor.
No, I'll write in. No worries.
Okay. So I'm going to put it in there, or can you put it in the chat? So until one week from today, so next Monday, the 24th. Uh, for Estelle Haley, she'll be receiving these, if anyone sees Haley before me. Go free to tell her. Um, so the public hearing remains open for one week. And thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
On behalf of the town board, I'll take a motion to close this public hearing. Just to close tonight's hearing. Emily?
Yeah, I'd like to close this public hearing on behalf of the village.
Hi. Hi. Yeah.
Hi. 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 Hi.
Yeah, I got the refrigerator.
The spell's trying to get more than a condition.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, I know.
No.
No, no, I hear you.
And I'm surprised, Lee. Like, oh, I'm sorry.
Too good of times.
Will we discuss any of the things like on our agenda, December?
Our cabinet. Right, and then we'll probably have to. My, my.
So your plan, are you, I know you're.
Well.
Good mention of the meeting, a hundred and more collaborative, you had a conversation. But you're not. I was going to say, these are another discussion.
So the committee will go to me, discuss everybody. And then, and there's certainly some changes we may have expected.
So.
It has a great. Every time would be interesting. Right. It could be. It could be. Emily, Lori, maybe those fail almost like. Yeah. Yeah. But it's had very.
That's right. Yeah, just a meeting. Yeah. Thanks. CJ, if you don't get them, we're going to go to Socks.
You want me to say it?
But we got a six anywhere.
So. Make sure you want me to stick around.
I know.
Always nice to be.
Turn, Larry, how are they?
Thanks.
Free before.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm bringing together tonight, breakfast for dinners.
Good night, Jason.
Art said. Art said. Do it later. Oh, just. Yeah. See, like, I get it.
They don't really. Wow, Steve. Well, that's all in New York. Yeah. He said, oh, man.
Okay, I'm very happy to open the public hearing for the village. I'm sorry, very happy to open the regular board meeting for the village. Uh, the only thing I'd need to do is have the side conversations in there, otherwise, uh, the microphone doesn't pick me up.
Are you? Yes. Design the agenda. Yeah.
All right. Yeah.
See you later.
Okay, item number one, um, is regular board beating minutes from November 3rd. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, item B is municipal snow and ice agreement supplemental agreement. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And item C is 80K winter invitational street pole banners.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and item D, holiday village stroll and fire department apparatus.
I'm ready to move.
Motion to approve?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and item E is, uh, dog sled application, Houghton, and I believe that is the one that is near the High Peaks Resort. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Anita, uh, that's as much as I have on the agenda. Is there more to be added or?
Uh, yeah, there are two more items. Uh, one is the approval of the revised program manual for the economic development revolving loan program.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll make the motion to accept that change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the second one is from Chief Dobson, uh, recommended hire of Nikita Goodman for the position of administrative assistant of the chief of police. Uh, appointment would be provisional at $28 an hour.
You catch the. Good, I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay, so I think the motion should include that it, um, passes all requirements for the police department and village. Okay, um, so we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Um, anything else, Anita?
Uh, no, that was it.
Okay, and that brings us to treasury items, um, approval of warrant affidavit number eight. Um, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I assume nothing else to come from treasury. Uh, Mindy is not there. Uh, anything on the new business?
Yes, I have one. Um, the Rail Trail Association, ARDA, um, would like the village to appoint a second representative, a business representative, um, and they have one in mind, which I clearly agree with, that Greg Porzalary be, um, the representative for the Rail Trail for Lake Placid. Anybody?
It's willing.
Yes, he is willing.
Is this up for comment before you, before you do that? Is this up for comment before you, before you do that?
You, you make a motion. Not really, but you, you usually you make a motion, it gets seconded, then there's discussion, but that's among the board members. Okay. I mean, that's Robert's Rules of Order, but you can certainly decide to take.
I'm just, I'm just thinking because there's other people that may also be, and this is the first that has a business owner on the rail trail, I've heard about it.
Um, I, I think that's something that we could put out to the public and allow people to submit applications and for us to vote on. And, uh, we also don't use Robert's Rules of Order any longer in the village, but, um, sure, uh, does everyone agree that that would be a good idea to put the, uh, put that position out there so we can look at, see who would like to be that representative?
Um, the only thing, they, they need this soon, so I.
I have nothing against Greg.
Yeah, no, no, um, unders- understood, uh, they came, it was their suggestion, so.
I bet it was.
When, what's their timeline?
Uh, by the December meeting.
Okay, so we've got a couple of weeks.
But we're, the, the December meeting's December 1st.
Okay.
Good, I, I would like to propose, and I know this is completely out of order, but you get somebody beside, maybe a joint person, two people to do it, one representing winter and summer, because Jack, Greg is representing summer sports. You need somebody also to represent winter sports.
Good point. I'll bring it up to them and see if the position can be shared.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, anything else under new business?
No.
Anything under old business? Um, nothing under mayor items. Any commissioner reports? Okay, um, anybody that's in the, the meeting room have a public comment or a question for the board?
Me, sorry. Um, I presented this to the town board on Wednesday and I just, I got through this. So this is a letter that I'm writing to the town. I'm also going to be sending it to you. I'm just kind of finishing it up. Um, I requested during the public comment period at the town board meeting on November 12th, that wording be added to our locally land use code. Not even thinking that it was going on at the same time as all of this. Um, specifically, section eight, point two, point eight, point A, A is an apple, A. Review considerations, general standard, and then number eight, which is the financial section of the review thing. Um, the, the general standards say the pre- proposed use or project shall be reviewed to determine blah, 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 one of these eight things. Um, parking, site review, all of that. So number eight states, specifically states, the financial ability of the applicant or developer to undertake and complete the project. I feel it's in the best interest of our municipality, specifically the town, village, school, and county, to add to number eight, the financial ability, to add all local municipal fees, taxes, levies, et cetera, must be paid up to date. And that there's a clear record of those same fees, taxes, levies, et cetera, being paid in a historically timely manner for that specific property and property owner. In the current land use wording, it states the ability of the applicant and or developer. This does not address the potential ability of the property owner to pay municipal property taxes or fees, especially if those taxes or fees were paid consistently late. If we also look at the timing of when or if bills were actually paid versus when they are due, it would be an accurate indicator of the financial competence of the applicant, which I believe is more important than the ability of the developer to cover the cost. Of course, a legal change in non-familial ownership would have to be taken into consideration, and there's also extenuating circumstances that would need to be addressed on a case to case base basis. This was written like five minutes ago, this part. In these times of economic uncertainty, it is imperative that our community has the ability to collect all that is due. By allowing persons and or developers permits to upgrade, change, or build without proven financial means is allowing these same people to walk away from a project or municipal fees and do whatever they want with the property and just leave it. And then we're stuck with the property either F-bill or they're not paying their due taxes. So I just want that to be a consideration, that it's a simple sentence to add on to this, to make people more responsible for what they're doing to our town.
Thank you very much. We look forward to your letter being sent to us.
Thanks, Art.
It's a good point, but we would have to have something to back it up. Like, you know, if you don't, then, so it.
Like, in such as, I don't understand.
Well, if, okay, if, let me formulate it, um, because as I, I was listening to you and I was like, mm, okay, I, I get it. So, okay, there's a piece of property that stays undeveloped for five years. What do they do? Do we tear it down? Do we assess them a fee?
Or it goes to foreclosure and then we're stuck with it.
But if they're paying their taxes.
Or not.
But if they're, right.
So that's the problem.
So you are sending this to the board, send it to the.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was literally writing it as we were talking right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and the town, we already talked about it with town, so the village and the town would get this, because I'm not sure who would vote on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have something, um, John Alton, edge of the dogs that rides behind players. And I'd like to thank the village board for allowing me the opportunity for the last thirty-nine years being up there, carrying on the Lake Placid tradition of dogs that rides. And as I get older, it gets harder for me and my daughter to take it over and help my daughter. And I'll still be there in a capacity also, but they're pretty much going to be in charge now and run the business, but, uh, they're both very capable. My daughter's been with dogs since she was a little child. Working with them and it's good to see her out there with them and just love what she does.
Great.
Well, good. Just like to thank you guys, but I'd love to see you guys come down for a ride sometime.
Thanks for the intro.
It's, uh, it's a great tradition in this town. We had lady from Plasberg doing an article on me and Mike, the other dogs that person, it was about the way we're both getting older and our kids are kind of getting into it. And she did a lot of history of like dog sledding in Lake Placid. I guess it was Jack Suzanne was the person once upon a time here, you know, is from the Lake Placid Club. It's just pretty interesting. I can't wait to see the article come out.
Thank you for the years of service you provided for Lake Placid and, uh, we, we wish you best in retirement.
Sometimes they get you on the phone for twenty minutes. How about this? Can we do this? But I'd like to thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody online that would like to speak to the village tonight? Uh, James?
Uh, thank you. Yes, thank you, Bob. About a month ago, it was in the October meeting, I entered the meeting on Zoom and uh, it wasn't the full board was not there, so I, I had some issues that, uh, didn't get full airtime. And those were the questions I, I sent to you people i- in an email, a list of things. Solutions to, uh, the big problem, uh, that you have in, uh, how your tax revenue has been, tax, tax base has been, uh, taken a big hit from the, uh, sale of the Paradox Marina. Uh, so, uh, I propose that you would, um, look at my notes. Uh, you have a marina, that's a surprising thing. There is a village marina and you, you rent it out to, um, the state and at, at no cost. Which is peculiar and, uh, you also have a fireboat that doesn't, may not even work all the time. And, uh, the fireboat can easily be trailered in and out when there's a fire. And even when there are fires, I think their record is not good at all, not their own fault, but just to send a fireboat out to the lake is to put out a house fire, it seems to never work. So there is no need for a fireboat, what the, we, the village and the town, the area and the school needs is a, is a marina, so those properties do not become, um, devalued so terribly. And, uh, so I was hoping that you would see that as, as, as a good idea, is to build a marina there. And along with the adjacent property, which is the water treatment plant, which can be relocated very easily. And, uh, also back to the village launch on Victor Herbert Road. I, I'd like to see you take one step at least into expanding that, uh, into a marina. Um, would be to survey the, the property and the land underwater. So those, those three things.
I thank you very much for bringing them up again, but as we have answered to you, I totally disagree with you and I believe our board does as well. Uh, the fireboat is needed. If you want to go down and have that conversation with the head fire driver or our, um, fire chief, I'm sure you will be quickly straightened out, but that is not the case. I've talked to both of them. The DEC is there and helps the village, and that's a good partnership that we continue to continue. Uh, moving a water plant, I, I don't know where you wildly get the idea that that could be done inexpensively. Um, it would be a huge burden to the village. I don't know where you would put it. Um, so I'm sorry, but all the things you've sent us, we have looked at and I disagree with you. And at this point, we do not plan to pursue any of them.
Well, it would, would be, uh, nice of you to consult someone and see how much it would cost to move.
We have, we have looked into that. Oh my goodness. Do you know what it costs just to up, make the upgrades we just did?
Uh, like I said.
Four point five million. You think we're just gonna move that?
Machinery just gets moved.
Uh, yeah, without engineering, it's, no, you're, you're way off base on that. I'm sorry, we will not be looking into that, wasting the taxpayers' time and money.
Do you agree that it was a mistake putting that plant there?
No.
There would be a better place for it, wouldn't there?
No, I disagree. I think where it is is perfect.
And the benefit of, uh, the forest rangers and the DEC, what is that?
They, they work with the village. They help us when there's matters on the lake and that's been a partnership we've had for years and we continue to have.
And what is?
You're saying we should kick them out and let you have that slip? Is that what you're saying?
You could, you could make a lot of money there. Or at least, at least get them to pay their market rate, which is very expensive.
Like I say, we work together.
Um, I, I just don't see the benefit of the forest rangers and the DEC. You have no, give me an example of what they've done. You don't know, okay, so the next.
No, we have, we have examples. I, I, I've, I've talked with, uh, our DPW and I've talked to our fire people and they're, they say they are both very helpful. At times we need someone to go up on the lake and take care of what, uh, someone that is having a problem and they've gone for us. Or they go around and assist on the, um, checking of boats. It's, like I say, it's a partnership we plan to keep, but I thank you for your comment.
Yeah, the, the boats can be trailered in and out. It just takes five extra minutes.
Uh, apparently you could do the same is what you're telling me. But, okay, thank you very much for your comments. Anything?
That was, so that was from, uh, last meeting. I didn't get the full opportunity. I just want some more, a big peculiar th- thing about Lake Placid and the town of North Elba. Is the people on the lake have a special issue, you know, is, is the, is the marinas. And when we, when we vote, it is totally muted because the village votes in town elections. And, uh, I, I would want to see that changed, but I don't have the, the time and the effort to do it. Would you agree that, that it's so?
Why would you say that the village shouldn't vote in town elections? I don't understand that.
Okay, so why would, because we have a saying, we have a special, special issue is a marina.
Well, but like, how, so you're saying we shouldn't pay town taxes either? If we pay town taxes, we should have our vote, which we, everyone in the village has to pay a town tax.
Where I, I'm sitting right now in the town of Greenberg, New York. And, uh, people in the village, to other, the villages, or I think there's six other villages in the, which are, uh, incorporated. They don't pay town tax. And they don't vote in town matters. They don't elect town officials. So I'd like to see you voluntarily asking the town, uh, the election board, the state to withdraw from the town elections.
If you could get them to stop taxing us, I'd be happy to try to push that forward for you, but I'll let you get the town to stop taxing us first. If they're going to tax us, we should have a representation.
Pay less town taxes.
You, we don't. People in the six villages pay a, a village tax only. That's what I'm saying. You have your own, should have your own village tax and no town tax.
Taxes. You pay village tax and town tax.
I'd like to see you not pay the town tax.
But that's not gonna happen.
So, so we.
See a change.
Really vote on that as a village board. That has to come from the town.
If you pay village taxes, you pay less town tax too.
Yes, but you're still paying.
You, you're still paying county tax and you're paying park district tax, but you're getting a break.
Well, yeah, but you still pay.
Correct, yep.
Yes.
Anything else?
Well, what is, uh, just to go back to, what is your answer on the survey for, uh, the underwater lands?
Uh, we're not interested in looking into that. We've looked into it as much as we had and it's not practical.
And part of the town, part of the land is in the town.
No, that's why you don't know. I just talked to a surveyor from, local surveyor and he said that your maps, as you published, you see the maps around and you seem to draw the line at the shoreline. He contends that, uh, the village actually goes into the water. So there, that's a reliable source says that, uh, that borderline is on shaky ground. And that, uh, the Paradox Marina is renting your land out, making money off of your land.
You would have to go get that survey and present it to us. You would have to go to Essex County Real Property and get a survey that says that we own that. Until then, it is owned by the state and the people who own the property. Until we see it any other way, okay?
It's not owned by the state at this moment. I would like you to look at the maps and, and get it resurveyed.
You present them to us and we will look at them.
I can't.
James, I mean, we'll be happy to look into it, but I can't promise you that you're gonna get the outcome you want, but I, we will look into that for you.
It, it takes, yeah, please, just take some effort. It's an important matter for you.
Okay, is there anything else?
Were you asking me a question?
No, James, is, is there any other questions you have of us?
No.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the board? Okay, there are no other matters to come before the board tonight. I'd ask them for a, a motion to adjourn.
No, wait a minute. Art, um, Art, I think our village attorney have requested a, I have requested.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For litigation matters.
I forgot that. Um, okay, motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
All in fa- and second? All in favor?
Hey, I will be disconnecting those of you who are not part of this, uh, session. I would like to. Art, we're gonna be calling you instead.
Okay.